First page we have is?
Page nine.
Page nine, you can begin please. Just tell us what we're going through.
Okay, there's actually only a few line items. There is my supply line item which includes all of the printing for the change of assessment notices that go out through the whole city. That is the majority of that supplies budget. So that is the first line. The second is our contract, which is the same as every year. The third line, actually for training, we can pull that out of assessing. It has its own line item under Board of Appeals, so it does not need to be under my budget. It's kind of doubled up, so it needs to be pulled out.
Okay, so we're eliminating 1,500?
Yep. Because it's not an assessing thing, it's a Board of Appeals thing.
Okay.
And then the last one is for like furniture and stuff for the office. I know it says we didn't use any from '24, but those numbers were pulled before I purchased the chairs. I know last year you wanted to go halvesies on it, but I found half off chairs, so I figured that met the spirit of it. So we did find chairs. I've paid 1,190 dollars for those. From out of last year's.
You're saying it's going to cost us $5,000 for chairs?
No, what I would like is new carpet, because ours is moldy and mildewy and disgusting, and I just, it's grotesque.
Are you going to work with?
No.
Are you going to go up for bids on this?
I don't know what the process is. I just wanted to make sure we could fund it.
You guys stay in the same office, right?
You've seen it. I've shown the three of you what the state of our office is. It is embarrassing because of how rundown everything is in there. We need, we need paint, we need carpet. Like, I don't think our carpet's ever been cleaned.
Okay.
It's real bad.
That's fine. I'm okay with leaving that if you feel like the aesthetics of the carpet needs to be upgraded. And for the sake of health concerns, I am 100% in support of that.
Yep, and that's it. That's all I've got.
Yes ma'am.
Was there a total of seven chairs purchased? I saw something tonight that said four and three.
Yeah, we did it in two separate, because we wanted to make sure the ones we ordered at first were, felt sturdy and good, and so we ordered the first four, and then those worked out well, so we ordered the rest of them.
So you're all set on chairs?
Yeah, we're all set on chairs right now. All we really need is just, the carpet is not sanitary, so I'd like to get that replaced.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that's it for us.
We're going to go to the Board of Appeals.
Yep, okay, so Board of Appeals.
What page?
That's page 16.
Thank you, Michelle.
Of course.
Mr. Turner, you did a great job. Good night.
I believe the first portion is just the payment. The Board of Review members receive $75 a day per day they're on the board. So I believe that's where that 2,000 comes out of. I don't, what's the fringe?
You speak into the mic, please.
Sorry, I don't know.
The fringe is the FICA.
Okay.
Yep.
Is it what?
The FICA, the Social Security, Medicare tax, and the commission fees.
How come the commissioners' fees went up? 500? Are we deploying more time, or?
Well, okay, so we are projecting this year for it only to be 1,500. We budgeted it for it to be 2,500, so, yep.
Thank you. Anything else?
The third line item is just publishing. We are required to publish when the Board of Review is in the newspaper every year, three times, so that's what that covers. And then that last item is for the training. The state changed the law. Boards of Review members are mandated to take training now every other year. Sometimes we can find those courses for free, sometimes we cannot. This past year, we had to have one of our board members take a course that was like $200, so.
But don't you think 1,400 is a lot, though?
I just, I didn't know what the budget should be, because if, so we have six members, so if they have to take, you know, so maybe 12 would be better.
I mean, I was even thinking maybe 500 in case you don't find something, and if we have to bring it back, I mean, bring it back.
Did they take it separately, or did they take it at the same time?
No, separately. I would assume.
If you can do it at the same time, probably be cheaper.
So usually I can find classes through the Wayne County Assessors Association, which are offered for free, but if they cannot take those classes, the Michigan...
I remember we took them in Westland one time.
Yep. Yeah, so sometimes we can find those, and sometimes we just can't. It kind of depends on the timeframe.
And you're saying sometime, you're not always doing it, though, correct?
Uh, yeah, they have to take it every other year. Some of people do take it. We do encourage them to take it every year if the law has changed.
I'd like to see that at 500. If you need to come back, you can come back in front of us. Is that fair?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Anything else?
Nope.
Michelle, can you put that in?
I'm ready for the next one.
Okay. You're all set.
We're going to move right through it.
I didn't know you were, you had the two, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Sorry, George. You can actually sit right up front and center.
Do you want me to do that?
We're going to grill you.
Why? How do I get there?
Councilor Salva's hungry. Page 11. You can begin.
Okay, salaries. Can you hear me?
You speak into the mic.
Okay, salaries. First, I'd like to, I didn't have much input on this, okay? But if you recall, I want to talk about the deputy clerk salary.
Yeah, one second.
Okay.
When you do talk about these, so we're looking at, okay, looking at them.
Yeah, see, I only seen a bulk number, so I didn't know it was broken down until I got the budget. Okay, and in January, you approved, this honorable body approved an increase for the deputy clerk position based on the passage of Prop 2 and all the additional responsibility that was in there.
Yeah, we did.
The nine days, right, okay. And in that motion, it said this in no, no way reflects a cost of living increase if that should be awarded. If you noticed in the budget, the deputy clerk is the only position that has not received a raise. So I'm respectfully asking that this position be provided.
Hold on, one second. You're saying, start from the top? Because you threw me off. Did you say that everybody received except for her?
That's correct. That I could see. I mean, I didn't look line item by line item, but that is the only position.
Michelle, can you consent to that?
The budgeted positions do include a raise for most positions.
Those are not included.
This one does not. This one does not.
That one did not, no.
Why not? Why not? Can you go to the podium and not speak from here? Thank you. I only say that so that, like, yesterday, Michelle almost fell. Please.
I was good.
You were sitting on half the chair.
Hi. The reason why was because of the 14% increase that she received that was approved by council recently. So again, to be fair to other deputy positions that haven't received that 14% increase in the past year, we thought it would be fair that she hold back for this 5% increase that the rest of them already.
What did you go from before, and what did you go to now?
Michelle, do you have last years?
I don't have last years on me.
I think she was at like 65,000 or 62,000?
I think so. 62 sounds...
62, and it got moved to 70, so that is, I believe, about a 14% increase.
Didn't we say that we're...
And that was based on the additional responsibilities.
Correct.
That's all it was based on, not a cost of living.
But didn't we just say that we're giving all of our deputies a raise to everybody?
To all of the non-union employees that did not receive an increase, they are. But again, we were trying to be fair, because there are other deputies that have similar job scope responsibilities that aren't making that much right now, so we have to be fair to all of our positions.
Like who?
Like all of the deputies in other departments.
And I see a 15% for a deputy.
What is it?
I'm not going to say names, but. In a deputy.
Okay.
Just.
You see a 15%?
15%.
And which one?
Where did I see it? I just saw it. The Deputy Treasurer.
The Deputy Treasurer. What about the Deputy Controller? I see that we just gave them a raise, and then we're giving them an additional raise based on what we saw here. So I mean, are we being fair, or are we picking and choosing?
Again, different scopes of responsibility, different levels of salaries for different positions. We're trying to be fair and standard with the comparables for other cities. I know that we had presented that in the past, and there had been a long comparable to other cities for those positions. So again, we believe that the deputy clerk is currently paying at a comparable level to other clerks in other cities, whereas other positions such as the controller were not, which is why we requested a adjustment of the salary so that it is comparable to other cities.
You know, I just, I'm going to respectfully disagree with you saying that 1.2 million dollars is going to plant Moran Gap, plus we have a controller, plus we just gave the deputy controller a raise, plus we're giving them an additional raise, then we're going to say our deputy clerk, well, we feel like she's doing good enough and we're giving her enough money. I, look, I don't want to go back and forth. I just feel like this is a lot of picking and choosing.
Again, we're basing it on comparables with other cities. It is not picking and choosing.
And I do agree, all the deputy controllers deserve to be paid fairly and equally. I'm going to agree with you on that one. But I think this seems like, sorry, Madam Clerk, like it's a pick and choose type of scenario over here. Counsel Chair. Counselwoman Menalowski, next one, then I'll go to you later.
Well, I guess we have power to do.
Can you turn your mic?
You know, bottom line is, we do have the power to give a raise on that. I mean, we control that.
100%.
So we may want to discuss amongst ourselves, what is a fair amount to give that person?
Well, if administration is offering a 5% increase to everybody, and the deputy controller, then offer her the same thing. But if we're going to deny everybody's, then deny hers as well. Counsel Chair. So... I'm sorry, one second. Counselwoman Breyer, was that you?
I'm reading.
Councilman Saab.
So we gave her, we approved a raise.
Ma'am, nothing from the audience right now.
When we approved a raise, it was because of more duties that were put to her because of state law. So we're punishing her.
HR Director. There you go. Did you want to step up to the mic?
Me?
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
So when we, when we approved the raise, it was because Prop 2, our proposal 2, and it seems like because what the state is requiring us to do, we're punishing her by not giving her a fair wage. And I mean, how are we doing comparables to other cities already when this just got approved?
I don't know, guys.
But I would, I would like to, is it the 5% that she has not gotten?
That's correct.
I would like to add the 5% to the clerk's, to the deputy clerk.
Can you give me that exact figure? Please, HR, step up.
What you're requesting is $3,500 for us to add.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
Hello.
How you doing?
I'm doing okay. So a couple of things. First is, in terms of different folks advocating for increases for positions that directly report to them, so some of those dollars were included. So when the city clerk talks about the Deputy Treasurer, that's a recommendation from the treasurer that the Deputy Treasurer have an increase. But all of these increases were predicated on everything being supported or not being supported. So the two things that we incorporated into the budget was a 5% increase for all non-bargaining positions. That includes some directors, that includes office managers, that includes some deputies. So for the deputy clerk, who received that increase in the middle of this fiscal year, maybe that wasn't included in the 5% going forward, and I think that that's what the clerk is sharing, correct? Okay. So but all of the increases, except for bargained increases, because we're obligated under the contract for those increases, but for, for those increases, they're built into the budget. For those positions that aren't under a collective bargaining agreement, then we were proposing a 5%, or there may have been an increased request from the various director or supervisor of that position. So those requests have all been incorporated into the proposed budget. We may or may not be able to do it. Okay?
Madam Treasurer, I mean, Madam Clerk, you said you did give the information, correct?
Yeah, I have the council motion right here, and Human Resources got to CC the Treasurer and Controller of the motion.
So, right, so I think what the clerk is saying is that in terms of the increase that the deputy clerk received, the motion was framed in such a way that should we agree to give all the non-bargaining union positions an increase, that that position would be included.
That's correct.
Okay. And I don't, and I don't think that 5% was included in the proposed budget for that position.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman Saab would like to put a 5%, I mean, doesn't mean it's guaranteed. This is, you know, we haven't told me 27, but you can adjust that from 70,000 to 73,000, and what's the?
500.
73,500. Thanks, Mr. Turner. Go ahead, you can continue.
I did, and I apologize.
Speak into the mic, because we can't hear you.
Okay, I got to eat the mic.
There you go.
As former Council Chair Abdullah. I want to thank the team that I met with originally to prepare this, help me through this budget, okay? Michelle and Darren, Margaret was there.
Into the mic.
Margaret was there. Who else was there? James? Okay, thank them, because they did help me through this. But there's a couple other things I do want to discuss. We didn't meet after that. This was the first time.
Hit the mic.
Okay, this was, that's much better. This was the first time that, I mean, we just met originally. So the second thing I want to thank them for is, if you look on, I'm going to skip, I'm going to go back to salaries, because I do have one other thing I want to discuss there. But on retirement prior years, there's $1,000 budgeted. I do want to thank them, because when I went from union...
What line item is that?
What line item is it?
706.030.
706.0. So there's $1,000. It looks like it's budgeted. But, so when I went from union to elected official, I don't get vacation time or sick time anymore. So they, like, you retire, you get paid off, out for that time that you accumulated over three years. But for the second year, in the third year, you get interest on the money that the city is holding. I had to wait two years to get it, but they did fulfill that, so I don't know that this $1,000 needs to be in the budget, because they fulfilled it this year, okay? And then if you guys can just jump up under salaries, there's the, per personnel budget includes vacation payout, seniority pay, and longevity. Okay? If you ever want to sit down and have, I'll explain the whole thing to you. But seniority pay, so one, once the TPOAM contract is approved, you know, they agree and it's approved, those benefits are typically extended to non-union employees. Okay, so for the 2018, I believe it was the 20, it was approved in 2018, I think it was the 2016 to the 2021 contract. Okay, in there, they granted seniority pay. So for the past three years, I've been receiving seniority pay. I have a legal opinion that said this is not wages, so you can't say that, well, it's per the local officer's compensation board. Because I do have a legal opinion that was prepared in 1997 that addressed longevity pay. It's a fringe benefit. For the past three years, like I said, I got it, I received it. This year, I did not receive it. I asked the comptroller, I mentioned it in the budget hearing, and I still have not received that.
How much is it supposed to be for?
2%. It's like under $2,000. Okay, so why I didn't get it, I don't know. But I do have, and I do want to tell you that I did speak with the former HR Director, Sabona Perry, when this first came in, because our very highly respected former treasurer, John Riley, would never take something that wasn't permitted by law, okay? He contacted, I talked to both of them, they both, they both had it, it wouldn't, they wouldn't have gotten it. This is historical information, this is historical. You can look back. I'm sure the former clerk got it, the treasurer got it, the former mayor got it. It's not about the money either. It's about the past practice, historical...
Does the treasurer get it right now?
No, because it's, it's earned. It's, you have to have, I think, eight years before you're granted it. Okay, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Well, how do we add it? Well, let me ask Mrs. Haslett, if you, you don't mind. Maybe, Madam Clerk, maybe they just, there's so much in this budget, I can see an honestness.
Well, this was last year's. Everybody gets paid it in November.
You know what the treasurer is speaking on?
Yes. So in working with Comptroller King, it was hard for her to understand some of our practices that had been in place. And so she questioned when the seniority pay 2% for all the directors occurred. We thought we had rectified it for everybody. Apparently, we had not.
And I did mention it when we did have our meeting, okay? And that has, and I appreciate the interest being, you know, addressed.
Yeah, so.
So can we add it?
Yes, we owe it to her, so we should issue it to her this fiscal year.
She has to be paid from this year's budget?
From November. Yeah, correct.
But I, yeah, last year I wasn't, next year.
And to make sure in the new budget to be added for the next year, boss, we owe her money from this fiscal year. 2% for last year, 2% for this year?
So, sorry, sorry.
2% for...
So let's talk fiscal year. She's talking this fiscal year, which is your 2324 fiscal year. She was owed a 2% seniority pay that was not issued to her.
Correct.
We owe it to her. Let's pay it to her.
Thank you.
Okay, now, in terms of going forward, we need to have a placeholder for it in the budget, in her budget. In the budget being presented to you, there's not a placeholder for it. I think that's what you're saying.
So can we go ahead and add it?
Yes. Okay, so, yes, similar to the 5% for the deputy, you know, if all things get, this is a little different, because it's something that, once you've served that period of time, again, historically, we've provided it. In some of your labor agreements, there's also something called seniority pay. Sometimes it's incorporated into base pay, sometimes it's a lump, sometimes it's six years, sometimes it's eight years. So, you know, it's, it's a common part of our compensation in our community, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mrs. Haslett, can you just ensure that she gets it from the pass, and then we'll add a place line for that? Thank you so much, I appreciate you. And then, Mrs. Michelle, can you make sure?
Got it.
That there's a placeholder? Can you give me the new number to that placeholder?
It's 2% of her salary, so that is 91.
It's under 2,000.
$1,964?
Yes.
Would that be the same thing for last year's as well, that she's owed, or would it be a little less?
A little bit less.
Okay, and then can you give me a number that you would, as a new placeholder number, just so I can make sure I can add it to the rest of my notes?
So the 1964 is the new...
Yeah, so like, would it go under 101, 960?
It would go under 101.
Hang on. 101.
I'm so sorry. I'll share.
101, 215, 703, 000.
703, 00. So that's what their salary, I mean?
That's where, that's her salary, and then the 2% will just get added to, the fringe will get added to that.
Yeah, the 1964 will be added to her salary. Right?
What's a fringe?
Yeah, but shouldn't you have a, it's online, but this is not actual salary, this is...
Correct.
It is a fringe, yes. But in the full-time personnel, it's added to the salaries expense line item. If you want it broken out separately, we could do that as well.
Give me a separate line item on it, please.
No problem.
That way we can differentiate the two, because if she gets a raise, and, you know, it's...
That was considered the cost of living, the longevity increase.
Okay. I think, unless you have any other questions, I'm good on the clerks, because I have another one, too, after the elections.
Well, yeah, hang on.
Okay. I do want to thank you all for approving the travel and education, and update you on that the deputy clerk and I both spent a week at the...
Haven't I put anything in?
No, the last year you did. Last year you did. So we did attend a week of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks Institute, and it was a wealth of information, and it was wonderful, a lot of information for, again, on Prop 2. And you just got to network with fellow clerks.
My other question to you is, I see supplies here, we're at 5,000.
Yes.
The requested budget was 55, you stopped 5, you requested 55, you got your 55. Are you saying that's okay, and we're good with that?
Yeah, I'm good with the 55. There was travel and education I had, but go ahead, we'll go one at a time. I'm sorry.
And then why did we remove travel and education?
That's on the bottom, it's still there. I did request 55, I only got 5,000.
Sometimes we got to give and take, man.
Yeah, that's, I was going to skip it.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's fine.
Okay, but we are adding a new line item for 1964, correct, Michelle? You're going to give me that line item?
Yes, it will probably be 703 dot 100.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk, what's the codification of ordinance?
That's when you make, okay, you guys are approving ordinance, it's a legal document. So we, it's Civic Plus that does it. George, what was the name of it before? Munich Code. Munich Code, sorry. And we have to, we have to codify means that we're putting it into law. So when you do the ordinance, we do publish it, and it's illegal, but then once it goes to codification, it's in, it's official.
Official.
Yeah.
Confirmation. And who charges this, that...
It's, it used to be Munich Code, but it's Civic Plus now.
I said it's a program.
Yeah, when you go book up the city charter.
Yes, that's all that.
Is there any fees from the county or the state on them?
No.
Okay.
You have a question from Councilwoman. Had a long night. And I know the Councilwoman's got a early flight tomorrow morning. So you're on the travel.
Yeah, because you are repeating me, so.
That's correct. Page 7.
Page 7. Councilwoman Hunsell's buying food.
What do we have?
It's barbecue.
Okay.
Someone says, buy me a burger.
Elections? Elections, I'm going to give you the good news, okay? It's a big pick ticket. It's a presidential year, so we, thank you, Michelle. And she recognizes the increase in voters out there. It's going to be a high ticket. But I want to tell you, we are putting in, we are submitting, we get reimbursed for the presidential primary that happened in February. And we are putting in $117,525.04 for reimbursement. Okay? So, it's not a grant, they reimburse us for holding that. So that's that. And as far as early voting, that happened with Prop 2. So that goes on your gubernatorial and your federal election. Yeah, your 22, your even years. And that's what's required by the law. So, just, no, I think it was last Thursday. So, the state, I think it's the state is offering, I submitted $45,000 for reimbursement for that, which would probably cover.
Our Prop 2.
Well, our early voting.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, 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 for what was put in. So I do want to let you know that, okay? So that's the new, I guess, what we applied for. Okay? Michelle recognized the increase in the early voting and stuff, so she bumped up our salary, or our part-time salaries. That's for all of our election workers, our backroom, which I don't know if you all seen that back there. But we don't have an active election going on, so if you ever want to see it, we're redoing it and stuff like that. So I can take you a tour if you ever wanted to, okay? I don't allow anybody in there when there's ballots. So, overtime, of course, and material and supplies, that's all of our ballots and stuff like that, because we will have to pay for that. Contractual services, we did increase that. All of the election equipment has to be tested prior to the election to make sure that, Nancy's shaking her head. She's, she's our number one help worker. So anyway, yep, she's watched it. So all of it, all the, it has to be programmed. I go ahead and we have a special computer in our office where I have to program the media. We take it all back here, we run it through every single piece of equipment, every single tabulator and every single handicap machine and our ICC scanner with adjudication, they all have to be tested. So typically, we do it. Typically, we do it, we have to contract it out because it's just too big.
How many machines do we have?
We have 27 precincts, so we have 27 tabulators, 18 handicap machines, and one ICC and adjudication.
That testing is expensive, you know?
Yeah, yeah. When you bring in a whole crew, you know, we've been doing it. Our staff has been doing it, but not this one.
Thank you.
Okay. Mileage, we have bumped up a little bit. Repair and maintenance, we don't have too much there, and that's it.
Who would we pay mileage for?
Our precinct, we're running around the city all day, you know, and going maybe to the precincts to mark the 100-foot line. Okay, you all run that run, you know, you can't get behind that 100-foot line. What's that? The famous 100-foot line.
Some of them are like 2,000 feet.
They seem like that. But, you know, I mean, on Election Day as well, because we have a rover, you know, I'm going out collecting, this is a big one now. We have all these ballot boxes out. Somebody has to pick up, which Sally usually does, the south end, because it's underway to work. But we have to check all the ballot boxes.
Really, who puts those out there? Is there somebody like Michael Blackburn that goes out there and puts the thousand, because his?
What, the what? The ballot boxes?
1,000-foot line.
Oh, no, our staff does. Our staff does. And the, our pit crew.
All right. Outside here?
Okay, outside, thank you.
Next up, we should have Treasurer's Office.
Treasurer's Office is on page 17.
17. Thank you, Madam Clerk, I made those adjustments, I will type them up.
Next in the hot page. All right, page 17. And I've given you all a breakdown, line item by line item, for the proposed budget for fiscal year '24, '25. I don't know if you want to go through them individually, just real quick. First one is 703, which is the salary elect, the treasurer's salary set by the Compensation Commission. 706 is staff salaries. These are contractual with POAM, except the deputy, and we're seeking $75,000 salary for the deputy. This is weighted on the fact that she has 30-plus years with the city and the experience, her job responsibilities. I included a workflow chart in your packet, so you could see that. But her total raises over the time here with the city have equate to 1.4%, which is not very good. Moving on to 706, retired years, we have none. So that's a zero. 707 is part-time. We bring in a part-time staff member during busy times, peak like summer taxes, winter taxes, and this is approved by the union. 709 is overtime, and as you can see, I don't really use or give overtime. There may be a very rare occasion, depending on workload, and if there's a timeline, a deadline, it has to be met. But you can see for this current fiscal year, I've allocated $95.34 out of a budget of $2,500. So very rarely used overtime. The next four items, hospital life insurance, general government pension, and fringe benefits are all provided to us for, proposed for the '24, '25 year, so I don't have influence there. But that is the information you have before you. 728 is our supplies. And that one we reduced. So what I did is I took a look, and thank you to the team that we worked with for our budget, but we've only spent $2,300 and some change out of $15,000. So we're pretty frugal there as well. 802 is dues. This is membership dues to Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association, the MF GOA, and the Association of Public Treasurers. With that comes a lot of opportunities and trainings that my staff participates in, as well as my deputy and myself. So our dues membership is very effective and used effectively. 818 is contractual services. This is a big one that we had to see a change in. And that is going to contractual services, including printing, mailing, taxes twice a year, consulting fees, annual disclosure, qualifying statement, as I have listed here. But we have already seen a huge jump in the price of printing the tax bills, mailing the postage. Everything has increased for us. In fact, we're over budget this year by a little under $5,000 right now and need a budget amendment. Again, that's something that, you know, prices increased, right? Inflation and others, other reasons. 861 is mileage. We don't use this one too much, but it would be for conducting, you know, city business and travel to those meetings or workshops. 960 is travel education. We appreciate the council always supporting this. We do a lot of trainings, myself, my deputy, even our staff. And I've listed some of the trainings and certifications that our staff has received, including cash handling, security, internal controls, and customer service. And those are national programs through the Association of Public Treasurers of Canada and the United States. The next page, we have 962, which is training. That's more in-house programs for staff that typically, like HR offers, you know, for everybody in the city. So that's in there as well. And then the last one I have for you is 981, which is capital outlay. We always ask for $1,000 in case, you know, we're trying to keep equipment up to speed, cash counters, for, you know, making sure money's not counterfeit. It's really a big deal these days, because they're getting really smart with counterfeiting. But that's what that money's for. And I just want to remind you that we, this department is heavily funded by the 1% admin fee, along with the assessor's office that you see on your tax rolls, and that's about $700,000 annually. And my proposed budget has an increase overall of $51,745.
Thank you so much.
Any questions?
Nope.
Oh. Okay. Good night.
You sent us the list before and I read it. Of the thing that you typed out, and that was very helpful.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Good, I'm glad it was. Thank you, Council.
It was, thank you so much.
Next is Parks and Recreation. They are page 26.
Okay, are we ready? All right. I know the interest in time, my budget is pretty much straightforward. So I'm just thinking that it might be just good to take questions in regards to.
I'd like us to go through line item by line item.
Okay, I can do that, too.
If you want, Michelle, you can, you can have Michelle do it. Up to you.
Doesn't matter to me.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Salaries recommended for this year is the $339,073. Part-time, $215,068. Overtime, $10,200. Hospital insurance, life insurance, general government, and fringe benefits are all put in by the Controller's Office. Supplies are $33,000. That went up because I need a lot more wood fiber for the parks.
Director, I'm sorry, just for the.
Bad shape.
I'm sorry, if you don't mind. For the salaries, how come there's only was a big jump in the senior coordinator position versus the other ones? Are these like the union or?
No, those are non-union positions. And basically, they were at 35, which was very, very low for a full-time position. So then, we brought them up to 40, which is comparable to what the recreation coordinator position is.
Just wondering.
And there was some, the HR director could speak to this, but there are some rules on the exempt positions, the labor laws, and bringing them up to 40 will keep them in the bucket that they're supposed to be in.
Thank you. I mean, I'm for giving them 40, or even a little like 42, 43. One, they work with our seniors. Secondly, 35 is rough.
Yeah, it was.
After taxes, that's, that's.
You know, I didn't think as they work with seniors, I thought they're just senior coordinators, like a position. No, so I would be like what Josie does.
Okay.
This is full-time. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, utilities, $50,000. Again, she, we have a comment about the splash pad that will not be open this year due to the construction. It's gonna take about 175 days for them to complete Van Houten Park. Dues and members, $1,530. Contractual services, oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. Mileage, $4,000. Contractual services, $20,000. Field, $2,000. And then I've got senior trips at $100,000. And that is reimbursed through Smart Financing that we get through them. Senior citizen budget, $24,320. Rec programs, $95,400. The Summer Fest, $59,000.
Summer Fest is Spirit Fest.
It's the Summer Fest, Dearborn Heights Summer Fest. It's formerly Spirit Fest.
The account will be, the name will be changed.
What is it?
It's Dearborn Heights Summer Fest. It hasn't been changed on.
We're gonna change the name on the general ledger.
Are we gonna change it to, so that it breaks off in the summer?
Well, it was changed last year as Dearborn Heights Summer Fest.
No, no, I mean, is the festival actually take place in the summer, is all I'm asking.
Well, I can't, I can't change the weekend or I lose my ride company. And I wouldn't be able to get another weekend, because they're all booked.
I just want you to know that those were the comments online, it's not, why are we calling it Summer Fest?
No, I, I know. It used to be, and the reason that it was called the Spirit Festival, it used to be on the Fourth of July weekend.
The comments were, were actually.
Were crazy.
They're like, the mayor's trying to change the seasons.
Well, basically, there were more comments as why it's called Spirit Festival, because it's not on the Fourth of July or Labor Day or Memorial Day weekend, so you get it both ways.
Director, before the Summer Fest, line 887, what was that for? The rec programs?
Rec programs, that's for all, that's for all of the programs that we do. The concerts, the Marshmallow Drop, the dances.
Did you budget in here for like Ice Festival or something? We talked about it before.
I, I tried my Ice Festival like three years in a row, and I got really super bad weather each time, so I finally gave up.
Why do you call it something like the Ice Festival, though? He's asking, not the Ice Festival.
Well, it was something I've always wanted to do, and it was just, it's an event, a winter event that you have in the, in winter, and then I'd always end up.
Remember, we talked in Ramadan, we had the EID, the Ice Festival?
Okay.
Yeah, like, so are we gonna do something next year?
I can certainly look into that and do that. I mean, I haven't, I've got funds in there to do programs planned, but not finalized yet, so we can do that. I know that I used to have. Not I, but there was one at the Canfield Center, and I know that there were issues with that. So I'd have to look in, into it and talk to the police about it and things like that.
Christmas party, and I loved it.
Yeah.
And that was amazing.
No, I know. I, I agree.
Well, you had those, you had those big angel wings.
Yeah.
Those things were really tall.
Yeah, I'd really want to see something to, you know, to, for the whole community, you know, be across, we do Christmas, Easter, everything. We got a.
So we have to eat a year?
I've got it, and I'll talk to you more about it later. I will.
Thank you.
Let's see. Repair and maintenance was $12,000. Eden Utilities, $30,000. Berwin Utilities, $42,000. Training, $8,000. And capital outlay is $165,000. That's for the balance of the funds that we need for the fitness courts. I do have to make you aware of some other issues that we've got arising, which is the tennis courts. The Central Park tennis courts are in very, very, very poor shape. I got initial, one initial quote. They basically have to be resurfaced, and it could be anywhere from $150,000 to $175,000. I know Parkland Park tennis courts have cracks as well, so those are a couple of things I'm making you aware of.
I love that you're taking it up, and I was part of that email chain with the tennis coach.
With the tennis coach.
Who was very adamant, by the way, guys, of getting tennis courts. But.
Yeah.
Just kind of a food for thought, why don't we get with the superintendent and say, hey, like, you use this more than our, you know, anybody. Why don't you guys split the cost?
In the past, when it's been minor maintenance, they've actually shared it 50%. I have just received this quote because I didn't realize the extent to the number of cracks that we had. So I haven't contacted them in regards to helping or assisting with the cost. I'm not sure that they would be able to assist half, so.
Or even a quarter, even if they, I mean, because we're not, we're not asking them to pay for.
That's definitely something that I do.
Yeah, I'm not asking them to pay for all of them, all the tennis courts. We're saying just the ones that, you know, by Crestwood at Central Park.
That's the money for the ones by, in Central Park. That's what it's gonna cost, $150 to $175. And that actually is from, that quote is from a person who actually repairs the cracks. He came, and I thought we could have the cracks, you know, filled and taken care of for the one year. He said, you can't even do that. It needs a complete resurfacing, so.
I agree.
So that money we got from the county, the $45,000, that's still going to the?
It's going, it's actually under contract to go for the marquee sign. So, and that wouldn't even make a dent in this, so.
I thought we agreed we didn't want to see it at the marquee sign.
It's already under contract through Wayne County, so, you know, as far as changing it and things like that, you know, it hasn't been done.
I just want you to know that this, I recall vividly.
I recall that, too.
Yeah, we've asked you not to do that with that.
I think the, I think you didn't directly ask me, I think it was more a comment, and I think it was a comment by Mr. Kinesik as well. But I've already got a contract with Wayne County in regards to that, and Mr. Kinesik is aware of that, too.
I know, but you know, to see $45,000 that's going to a park, to go to a marquee and not actually being utilized where our community can use it, like maybe even levying some of that expenses on the tennis court, like, instead of jumping to the marquee. I know, I get the digital sign that you made, and you said having somebody getting up there to put up the sign.
It's very difficult, because you end up with neck problems, and I'm gonna have people with neck injuries if we continue to have it the way it is. It does not even light up anymore, so. I'm thinking about the staff, which somebody needs to, after 30 years of using the same sign, I can't even get employees.
What if we could have found a grant for that and used that money for something? We don't, we don't even know that, though. I'm just thinking out loud.
We have done grants for the community centers. We have not been made aware of anything yet, because, you know, the timing is not in line with the budget here.
Here we get grants for, then, oh, the Ian Center.
Well, that was community block grant money. And community block grant money does not qualify for Canfield or Central Park.
All right.
How much does a sign cost over there?
The initial quote I got was $60,000. So, and we're going out to bid now, so I'm hoping that it will be less than that, so. Anyway, so I just wanted to make you aware of that, and do you want to go to Richard A. Young now?
Yes, ma'am.
What page is that?
Page 27.
Salaries are at $42,000. Part-time, $149,146. Overtime is $2,000. Hospital insurance is $10,353. Life insurance is $343. General government pension, $14,327. Fringe benefits, $14,776. Supplies are $7,695. Utilities are $50,000. Contractual services, $15,000. And mileage, $900. Recreation programs is $30,000. Repair and maintenance is $15,000. And then capital outlay, two things I have to make you aware of on this. And as you can see, we don't have capital outlay on this. However, the Richard A. Young roof is in really, really poor condition. We've got several buckets catching the water when it rains. And the price for that is approximately $200,000. And then Swapka, we still have the issue of Swapka Park tennis courts at $400,000. But again, we did apply for a grant. I don't know what the timing is that, that we'll hear on that, that we, if we get that, so.
Before, before we move forward, and I'm sorry, Councilman, if I may, I'm just gonna openly say, I know Councilman Conson has had this conversation with me many times, and we've actually taken a look at it. I feel like it's been so long that the residents on the south end at Swapka Park have been begging for these tennis courts to be repaired. Here we have a coach who just emails us one time, and we're so quick to replace it.
I, I'm just telling you what the most high priorities are.
Well, I'll tell you something.
Because you're gonna hear about them.
A high priority, I think, to me, before Central Park tennis courts, would be Swapka Park tennis courts. I feel like for too many times, we watch our, our south end be neglected, and we're so quick to fix some parts on the north end. We're seeing Van Holton Park, we're now gonna see Central Park again, and now we're gonna say, well, Swapka Park, we don't have enough money for it.
Well, actually, I have spent a lot of money on renovating and bringing the Richard A. Young Center up.
You have, and thank you, you have, you have.
I mean, we are doing things in the south end, it's just, it's not in the parks. And everything has been let go for so long through the previous administrations that.
Been three years.
We're playing catch-up on everything, so. I thought possibly I was gonna have that done last year, and the school systems, I had half the money in the budget, and the school system said they couldn't come up with the other half, so.
I know, I know I'm going a little off topic, because we already went over the Parks and Rec one. But we're, at Central Park, there are. But, we're, at, at Central Park, there are two tennis courts, and there's a single one, correct?
Well, there's seven total.
Okay. How many different cages are there?
Well, seven.
Can we convert one of them into a pickleball?
You know what? I've done a lot of research on that.
It's growing drastically.
It's, it's growing, but tennis players do not like pickleball next to them and vice versa. It has to do with the game and, and the courts, and the balls flying into their courts. So, initially, what we had planned on doing, and we don't have the funds yet, was when we did the design for the Heather Lane Park, we put six pickleball courts into that.
I only say that because, you know, when I first went to the Richard A. Young Center, Richard A. Young Center, it was all the seniors playing pickleball all day.
Well, that's why we planned it for Heather Lane, and, and you're right, it is growing. But, I think you would have issues putting it into the Central Park Courts because of the high school using it all the time. And there are a lot of issues, and I hear that from all my different colleagues from different cities. They don't like each other because of, you know, the balls and the differences, so.
Okay, that was just some food for thought, Councilor.
Yep.
As for the roof, I have a question. How'd you, who, do you have that estimate for the roof with you by any chance, or?
Well, this estimate was actually, and that's why I told you, it's kind of a rough estimate because it was from the gentleman who actually just repaired cracks, who, he's very familiar with the tennis courts, and he said he wouldn't even touch it. But, by working, his work that he's done with other companies, like asphalt companies, he was able to give me a rough estimate because this actually just came about as, as Mo knows.
With the Richard A. Center, I know, I own a, I own a pretty large company myself, but it's a metal roof. And just the top is, is a flat roof. I seen it. I looked at it outside, because we walked in the other day, and we seen the leaks.
The roof estimate that I have came through Mr. Deeb. He had a contractor look at it and, and give us an estimate of what it would cost.
Send me that contract. Email it to me, please.
I, I don't know the name of him. I can get it to you, but I don't know it offhand. Because what I needed was just the price right now, because obviously, we'd go out to bid for that.
Yeah, that, I was gonna say, is it a metal roof? I don't know what makes a metal roof leak. Is this some kind of seal or something on it?
No, there's some, there's some fire roof out there.
Anyway, I know, we talked about this, and I, and I know you had some people in there looking at the sauna rooms there.
Yes, well, the saunas, yeah, both saunas, the women's is on its way out, the men's is already gone. I'm digging that out of my budget to have those repaired. We actually have to have those completely gutted, and a new sauna kit put in each of those. And they were built with not enough electricity going to them, so that's why the one burned up. So, we've gotta change out, upgrade the, the electricity for it so it doesn't happen again. I'm working with a guy that, it's all he does is sell saunas, and we're actually out to bid for that right now.
Is it gonna be made out of wood like the other ones are?
Yeah, that's the way saunas are. Yeah.
Yeah, you can only get a sauna made out of wood.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a sauna.
Well, I don't know.
That's the way they are. Sorry.
No. She said a, a unit go in there.
Well, they sell them, they sell them as kits, basically, and then you have a person that comes in and installs them.
Thank you.
So. All set? What's that? Are you talking about Richard A. Young?
Yeah.
Basically, the two things that got cut out that, you know, we just talked about were the tennis courts at Swapka Park and, and the roof. But, the roof is more a higher priority than the tennis courts, obviously. We got buckets everywhere. Mainly in the hallway, but the water travels, so it, it's, I mean, I think we went from like one bucket to maybe, I don't know, 10.
What about the kitchen?
The kitchen, I, I haven't seen any leaks in yet, and we've been watching that because that kitchen's been all redone.
I was in there a couple weeks ago, there's just a few issues in there.
Oh, the appliance need to be replaced too. And I, I did talk to my staff person about the ice machine. Yeah, I, I think I got your message or somebody else, a message from somebody else that was yours. I'm gonna dig it out of my budget. Yeah.
You're all right.
So.
Can you turn on your mic, Councilman? I'm gonna repeat everything. Hello. Hello. Hello, hello. I'm not here. This is Mike.
All set?
Thank you, Director.
So, next is HR, page 15.
What page are we on?
15. 15. Okay. Hello, stay awake, the last one, we can do it. Okay. So, with respect to going line item by line item, let's start with the salaries. And then I would also ask you to take a look at the personnel budget pages because I am making a recommendation for a change in the staffing in the HR department. So, I am looking at adding a labor relations position. So, I'm gonna tell you a little story. So, when I came to the city of Dearborn Heights, I didn't know anybody here. And I had just left my job in public education, and I was retired. And I think I, I interviewed with the mayor and with the chief of staff. And, and by the end of the day, they called me and said, you know, we, we'd like you to join us. And I said, well, gosh, I, I just retired, and how about if I start the first of November? Hasn't even been a month yet. And they're like, well, our person is leaving, and the substitute person we got to come on board ghosted us a couple of days, so, so can you start sooner? So, I came on board on October 21st of, of.
Remember that day?
That particular year. And I talked to Elizabeth Sabota Perry, who I have the most respect for, incredible business acumen that she had through MBA, and her ability to understand financial things, which is, I will tell you, not my strength. And I asked her, well, what about labor relations? Like, where are your contracts? And she said to me, you know, labor relations are really not that big a part of this job. Most of our contracts are for five years, and really, there's an attorney that bargains them. So, it comes up once every five years, not, not a big deal. You know, your bigger challenge is gonna be the civil service process. Okay? So, I said, oh, oh, okay, okay. And then we were in the middle of bargaining maybe three contracts at the time. I'm not even sure which contracts it was at this point in time. But, I will tell you, in the two years that I have been here, almost two and a half years, I feel like I've done nothing but bargain contracts. So, we settled a couple of those the first year round that I was here. And it was a very negative experience for me, for the employees.
You said it was a very rough.
Negative, negative experience. And we ended up in mediation, you know, with all of them trying to, trying to get a settlement. And some of those contracts, we were only able to settle for a year. So, I thought, well, you know, I've been negotiating contracts for a long time, and I think I can do better than that because it really is about the relationship that you have. It really is about following the contract day in and day out. That helps you build that rapport, helps the union employees feel respected and recognized. And then to go to the table and bargain with them, you know, now there's, there's a relationship there, you know, because bargaining is a give and take. And so, how do, how do we achieve that? How do we do that? And so, as I thought about leaving this position and how to replace this position going forward, you know, in terms of what our budget is, and what a labor relations, HR, you know, executive level position would be out in the marketplace, I don't think our budget is, I'm not sure that you as a council would be comfortable paying that kind of money for that kind of position. So, I thought maybe a better approach would be to separate the two roles. And so, to have a human resource manager, and then to have a labor relations person. So, and in the short run, you could think about a labor relations person as a contracted position because your police contract and your police supervisor contract are, are up this June. So, you know, we're, we're preparing for bargaining now. And in the patrol contract, they have a caveat in that particular contract that anybody hired after 2011, they don't get retiree health insurance. Their final average compensation doesn't include this, that, or the other thing, you know, a lot of those kinds of changes. And over the course of the evolution of that particular employee group, we now have more than 95% of our employees that have been hired after 2011. And so, that's a concern for us, it's a concern for them. So, in terms of how do we negotiate a sustainable pension, how do we negotiate retiree health insurance? Because those are still key things that we want to provide to those employees in recognition of their service. But, we also have to find a way to do it in a cost-effective way so that it's sustainable for us. So, this is not gonna be a short bargaining session like it was the last time that I met with them in the fall. And when I met with them in the fall, and they brought forward all these contract changes, I said, listen, that's a much longer, deeper conversation. We're struggling at $40,000 for a police officer to attract anybody to our city. Can we deal with the salary issue so that we can try to staff up? And then when we, and just do a one-year contract, and then when we come back, you know, we'll, we, we can be more prepared and better address the pension issues. So, that's what we're looking at in terms of that group. And then, as you may recall, when it comes to police supervisors, their salary is predicated on what the patrol officer says. So, you know, a sergeant, and this isn't the exact right percentage, but you know, a sergeant is like 119% of a patrol officer. A lieutenant is 125%. A captain is probably 100 and something, something more than that. So, it's good that they're both up at the same time because we can calculate and forecast those costs, you know, going forward in terms of working with them. But, I don't anticipate that it's gonna be a three-session bargaining scenario and will be done. I mean, I would like to think that, but I'm not sure that's really what's gonna happen. And then, going forward, in June of '25, then you have two more contracts that are up. So, your DPW supervisors are up, and we have a wage reopener with dispatch. And then by June of 2026, you're gonna have TPOAM is gonna be up again. That's the tentative deadline that we're looking at for FIRE. If we're able to settle with FIRE, they would be through June 30th of 2026. So, you'd have those two contracts, pretty big, important groups as they all are, coming up at the same time. So, looking out for the next two or three years, this bargaining aspect and labor relations aspect is just gonna be a part of our organization. Maybe at some point, we'll get to another five-year agreement with all of our groups, but I don't see that happening in the short run. And so, how to best prepare us for that? I looked at dividing my position into those two categories. Human Resource Management, because you still need the staffing, you need the training and development, you needed leadership development, you need the policy development for sure. And then the labor relations component, which, depending on the budget, you could think of in two different ways. You know, you could contract for someone with the current contracts to help us get through the next bargaining session with our, our police department. Or we could think about bringing an in-house person because it's that relationship, it's that rapport, it's that, issues that come up for all of the contracts, grievances that are filed under all of the contracts, and having someone who has some content knowledge, can build a relationship with our union leadership, understand the contracts, honor the contracts, which is really how we honor and respect the union employees. So, I'm proposing to you, under this budget, that we look at a human resource manager position. We look at a labor relations position. The HR specialist position is the benefit administrator, and also the human resource information system, HRIIS, component of human resource management. And then the confidential secretary. So, and, and looking at the HR specialist and the HR manager position forecasted a 5% increase for those positions, similar to other positions across the, across the city. Okay? So, that's the salary piece. That's what you see in terms of why is there an increase in, in that number? That's the combination of adding another position and then adding a hopeful 5% for the HR specialist position and the HR manager position. Okay?
So, thank you, Margaret. The, if we were to contract out for the labor relations position, like with a try-on or with a, in other words, with a company that regularly did that, and that, I've always thought, and we had for years, the mayor's assistant went to the negotiations, that was, sometimes the city attorney did it. A lot of times, as you say, the, the key is that negotiating the terms, it's not something you need a lawyer for. Do you anticipate that we would have someone in that position full-time? Or we would probably contract out, or I, I suppose that's to be determined. Then, if we, if we contracted out, who would we get? Like, an example, not exactly, but like, what type of company to do that?
So, I would be looking at contracting with a staffing company that has an expertise in recruiting people that have the skill set that we would be looking for. So, what will we be looking for? We would be looking for someone who had served as a chief negotiator. We would be looking for someone who had worked in the public sector because the laws around the public sector and the private sector, when it comes to labor relations, are different. But, to have that experience, that union experience, resolving grievances, you know, building, building that rapport, probably looking at a staffing company to identify someone that could be a contract to hire, or you could just contract with. And it could also be someone that you could contract with over multiple years. So, as, as, as the council looks at the budget as a whole, you know, what our revenues are, what the expenses are, what, what we've requested across the organization, and you make your final, you know, approval of what the budget is, then based on what those resources are, would then determine what's the most cost-effective way to try to, to try to achieve that labor relations component. Okay?
But, it would probably be somebody we would contract with as opposed to somebody being in-house. And it would be difficult, I, I would think, for practical matter, if they were a city employee. That's another.
Well, so, I, I, I don't really think so. I think that in terms of actually being a city employee, being part of the HR department, could really facilitate positive working relationships because there is such a, there's such a connection between the training and development components that you're trying to do, how you manage and work with employees, and then how you're managing your labor agreements. Now, attorneys are important, no doubt about it, but they play a specific role. Okay? And that role is not necessarily about employee relations and, and that working and collaboration that you try to develop.
Negotiating terms and so forth, yes.
So, but when it comes to how to frame it, what the contract language should say, how do we protect the city? How do we clarify what, what we mean, an attorney is important.
Well, I see here that you budgeted for, it was a proposed budget salary, but you never actually submitted it for $75,000.
Correct, because it's for next fiscal year.
Well, no. It's saying that it's, it's being proposed salary full-time, but then for 2024, 2025, but it's not put in to be in there for 2024, 2025.
It's not the recommended budget.
It's, it's only on the recommended budget.
It's on the requested.
It's on the proposed salary full-time, and it's saying, it's not added in here.
The proposed salary is the requested.
But, it's not the recommended. Correct.
Correct, yes.
It's in the requested, but it's not in the recommended, so you're not getting it.
Not yet.
So, you pay me with this whole spiel. I'm looking at it, I'm like, am I seeing something different here? And I'm adding the numbers up.
So, basically, you requested it, but the administration did not put it in the recommended.
Now, what I would like to say to your well-put speech, and I agree with you, you know, the, the separation of the administration and maybe the HR department because, you know, ultimately, I think what the chatter is, HR, which is supposed to play the grounding of as being equal, being a safe space, and I'm not saying that it's not, but the chatter is that the culture change that has happened, I know this is a conversation me and Mariana have had, the culture shift that has happened, everybody's kinda just like, who can I talk to? Who can I trust? Who can I not? You're stating potentially, this labor person can be the mediator through the city on behalf of what we can and what we can't do to help mitigate things moving forward, and potentially seeing a five-year contract rather than a one-year contract that you have to do because we have to go back and, and see if we can give them retiree, you know, pension or, or health insurance. Something that, you know, ultimately, if we can afford it, we'd like to offer it. My only thing is, and we are not the richest city in the world. And I'm, like, we don't have Henry Ford. We don't have big hotels or big dealerships, or a very small bedroom community with a very tight, you know, budget. And seeing that we're already over our budget, and seeing that we've already increased it on things that, like, how do we cut $55,000 from the treasurer's office? How do we figure out, now the clerk's office, we can't afford to give you the additional 40,000? We can't afford to give you the additional $40,000. Those are very, very hard decisions. How do we tell Councilman Wenzel, you know, we can't afford to give you three new ordinance officers? Which we haven't even gotten to ordinance yet. How do you tell Moby Dun, we don't, we can't hire three companies to trim down trees and maybe have more money for salt to give better services to the residents? So, you know, these are very hard decisions. And we want to have that mediator between, and I'm just speaking for myself. I, I would love to see 10 people in that department so that it can be a safe space for people to go in there and have that discussion and be confidential and feel like they can go in there and whatever, to feel protected. Because that's really what the HR department is supposed to fulfill aside from doing all the amount of legwork that you took on in the last two years. And we thank you for that. And it doesn't go unrecognized. But sometimes you have to make very strong decisions. And it may be insinuated that these decisions are being made based because, you know, certain things are being favored versus not, where it could be potentially a mistake, like the clerk's office. But, you know, sometimes our mind plays with us and makes us believe that this is, you know, a hate or this person doesn't like me, or this is, this administration's friend, or they're an anti-council, or anti-police, or anti, and I'm not saying that you are, by the way, for full disclosure. I know you're not. You're an educator. You're coming back, trying to get back to this community. But, but just such a tough decision, kind of like Councilman Constance said, where if we give somebody from the HR department, who's going to be hired inside, who's going to get through HR, who has to now negotiate with the union that feels like, well, maybe if we hire that person through the union and let the union set that person inside HR and allow them to be the one that says, "Okay, this is what I'm seeing inside the administration. This is what I'm seeing inside the union." But if we're going to say that the administration's going to hire this person in and they're going to, you know, they're going to be the one to help negotiate, I think we're going to still see the crossfires like we've seen in the last two, three, four years.
So, and, and those are really good points. And I will share with you that it is a common playground in the HR area. And I think that the best training that I had was being number eight of 10 children. And I have a relationship with nine different people that I grew up with. And they are very different people. So it's always going to be in HR that you're straddling that because you have the management side and you have the employee advocacy side. And so your skill and ability to do that, you know, is, is really critical to the positive impact that you can have on an organization. And so I, I understand, you know, what, what you're saying for sure.
And it's nothing personal.
And that, and, and that it is, it is a key component for anyone to be successful in the HR department. There has to be trust. There has to be a sense that there's confidentiality. There has to be a sense that there's fairness.
Correct.
Okay. Sometimes the answer is no. It doesn't mean you got to be mean about it.
100%.
Okay? So I, and, and I know you, you do have some really difficult decisions. We have some awesome, I will tell you, at the, at the front end of this budget, I was sharing with Councilman Brier during the break, we had a request for 22 more positions. 22 more positions. And we can't afford 22 more full-time positions. Okay, so can we afford two? Can we afford three? Can we, can we afford four? Okay, if we can afford four, what for out of those? We understand. We know that, that we're creating a dilemma here for you. And so we're not trying to, but you know, everyone's trying to do a good job. Everyone's trying to meet the expectations of our community, not just you, but also our residents. And to have a pride of craftsmanship and feel like you're doing a good job. And, you know, that, that you're meeting the needs of the residents and, and the people that, that you're working with.
Thank you for saying that.
Council Chair. Councilman Wenzel.
How does this labor relations person, how would they differ from the labor relations lawyer that we hire to negotiate contracts?
So, Ashlyn, I'm just going to move it over.
And would we still need the, and would we still need the lawyer?
Yes. And so you need the lawyer in terms of some of the legalities involved in contract language and really some of those components associated with employment law. The labor relations person is your employee relations person. So this is the person who's building the rapport, implementing the contract, following the contract, and understanding where the union employees are coming from. And how do we try to meet that need? How do we try to solve that problem? What problem are we trying to solve? And so for an attorney, I always say, in all the years I've been negotiating, attorneys have an important role. They do. But when all is said and done, they go away. And who's left here living in the organization? Okay? So it's your HR person and your employees. And we're the ones who have to keep the organization going. The attorney serves an important role, but the attorney doesn't live here. And so when you think about a labor relations position and employee relations position, that's how you think of it. Because it's really about that ongoing rapport. And as problems and issues come up, okay? Then I've always kept track of them. Because sometimes there's some problematic contract language and we keep, you know, they keep filing grievances. We keep having trouble whenever this particular scenario comes up. So when that happens multiple times, that's a prime time when you go to the bargaining table. Let's work it out because his language isn't working for either one of us if you have to keep filing grievances about it. On the other hand, if you have a singleton issue that happens one time under a special set of circumstances, so you make an exception to the contract, you don't necessarily need to change your whole contract because maybe you had a special isolated incident kind of thing come up. But what you do need to have is a good working relationship with your union leadership so that you can find a workable solution with respect to that. And you know, I'll, I'll just, I'll just say this, this last thing. Sometimes a supervisor is a jerk, you guys. And sometimes an employee is a jerk. So when you're dealing with these things at the issue, you've got to be able to recognize that. And if an employee is a jerk, they're probably a jerk for the union too. Okay? And if a supervisor is a jerk, they're a jerk for me to deal with also. So how do we find the workable solution? That's relationships. That's relationships. And that's why an internal position would be beneficial to us. But again, we have limited resources. And so maybe a fallback position is that we think about contracting somebody on a shorter term. And you don't have the pension costs. You don't have the benefit costs, you know, those kinds of things. You also don't get all the benefits. But what you do get is a human resource manager who can do human resource management. Okay? And have all the time-consuming aspect of bargaining, which it's not that it's not valuable time. Okay? People take time. People take time.
Could we, could we, hang on one second. Could we hire one person that does both?
Yes, yes. And, and to hire one person in today's marketplace, okay? You're talking about between $130,000 and $150,000.
Okay, so how much did we pay this year, our labor attorney? Well over that, right? Way over that.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to pull, I'd have to pull that number.
So it'd be beneficial to pay a guy $150,000 or a girl $150,000 that do both jobs?
So, and, and here, and here lies the challenge with that. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you. Is, okay, and then what am I paying the comptroller? And what am I paying the IT director? And what I, okay? So it doesn't feel appropriate to pay a position that much more than, 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 than those other positions.
You're paying, I don't, I don't know. I mean, someone knows how much we paid this labor attorney. Is it over $200,000? Is it half a million?
I don't think it's over $200,000. I think I, it's maybe $130,000.
So we got $130,000 and $75,000. So you're over $200,000 right there. So we'd save money by paying someone $150,000.
Maybe so.
All right, Councilmen, guys, let's wrap this up. I don't want to.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to.
Thank you, thank you for the answers.
10:30, we don't want to barge you.
Oh my gosh, it is 10:30. I'm sorry, okay. So let's go through the.
Hold on, Councilman Constance had a quick comment.
So I have a few, I have a few comments, sorry. So a number, so a few issues here. I feel like the, our Council Chair was saying that, you know, it's hard for HR to take, you know, seems like the morale in the HR department is very down with people coming to it, bluntly saying that certain people, employees in the city do reach out and complain. My biggest thing is that with HR, HR does not work for the administration. They work, the, the department works for the city. And sometimes when we get certain people reaching out or people talking, you know, it's, it's, there is favoritism in, in the department. There's no doubt. Second is, is that, you know, we say, I'm quoting you verbatim, we said, "We have to follow the contracts." But do we follow the charter? How many times have we violated the charter as a city or as HR based on the administration or for the administration? And for us to go hire someone or multiple people and hire them through the same hiring process we're doing, it'd just be a waste of money, one. It'd be a waste of a position, two. Because that same position we're going to hire is going to report right back to the administration, not to, not in the best interest of the city.
Anything else?
And I'm not against having a department that's fully staffed that would, would work, would work in the best interest of our, our first responders or our employees or any contract, to make it five years or better. But the problem is, like you said, we have grievances, litigation, everything in between. It just seems every single department we have in the city right now, it's either we're hiring, no offense to Michelle Plant Moran, attorneys in every department, opinions for every email. It's, it's just all over the place. And by, I believe that adding more positions, yes, it would, it would, it would definitely help. And it would, it would reduce problem. But I just think like Council Chair said, that if we, we were to bring somebody for labor relations, they shouldn't go through the same process. The unions should be involved in the hiring process. That's it. And, and, and again, I have my differences with, nothing directly against you, ma'am. I have my differences, which I believe that some hiring processes that were done in the city, that you, you had directly affiliation with, with the hiring of these contracts violated the charter.
Hey, let's refrain from talking like this right now.
It's, 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 it's not, it's not about any single, I'm not naming it.
I know, just for protection and legality reasons.
Yeah, but, but I'm not mentioning names or any which contracts. But it's, it's, and again, I'm following the director's words. And she said, she opened her statements that we have to follow the contracts, but we also have to follow the charter. And that's where I feel the disconnect and that we should be following the charter, not to what the administration just wants. I'm not even at that, thank you.
Councilman Constance.
Briefly, I just think of a horror story with the past administration when the person doing the negotiation, the mayor's assistant, there, there were a lot of problems. The state of Michigan has separate labor negotiators. There's a man, Jim Amar, I think he's retired now. He's not a lawyer, but he did nothing but public labor negotiations and mediations. There's a gentleman who's a resident at the South End who did nothing but labor negotiations on behalf of the union for the company. And negotiations are different than what you need a lawyer for, like for a, you know, maybe the drafting of the contract or whatever. And I know the unions, like TPOAM, and they, they have one or two attorneys, but they, you know, the, headed the union negotiates. And then you, you should have, and then the human resource director can be more of an administrator, taking care of the city day-to-day. Someone the employees can go to. So I think it's a good idea. I just think, and this is the last thing I'll say, it's, it's got to be an outside company of some sort. It can't be somebody who's an employer. Public, public safety, negotiating with public safety. Look at the city of Taylor next door, it's very, very, very rough.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yes.
Councilman. Can we just go through the finished line items? I, it seems like there's a lot of, I knew that was going to be an emotional topic, but I'm glad that you brought it up. It's in everybody's ears. Let's just go through the line items. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Council Chair. Okay, so then after the salaries, you know, the retirement, you know, these are things outside of our, our control in terms of what those costs are. So, you know, for part-time, for the hospital insurance, life insurance, general government pension, fringe benefits, right? You've heard all of those things. Okay, so then at supplies, so we're requesting to keep our budgeted amount at the same amount. The ask here, and we recognize again that it's, it may not be granted. But our file cabinets for all of our personnel files are by law supposed to be in fireproof file cabinets. Fireproof file cabinets that lock today, run in the neighborhood of $2,500 per cabinet. We have worked diligently to reduce the number of file drawers that we need to house our personnel files.
So where do we have them now? Just regular cabinets?
Just in regular cabinets. Okay, that, that we lock. And when I have a spare moment, maybe we could get a grant from our risk management company because it, it might fall under, you know, one of those categories in terms of preserving, preserving the personnel records.
You have allocated for that?
I, I asked for $10,000. That's why I know it's a big ask. I mean, it's $2,500 per cabinet, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I was reading on the wrong line. I was reading, dues member, okay.
Okay, but just wanted to let you know, that's, that's what that's about.
Look, I think, I think that's, you know, personnel information is extremely important. You're saying they run anywhere between $2,500 a pop for need.
Probably about four. I mean, I would start with, we have lots of files, but that would take care of our active employees.
How would you determine which files go where?
I would start with the active employees. Okay. And then our dues member. So these two organizations, SHRM is the Society of Human Resource Management. So those are annual membership dues. That gives us access to the website, which is a lot of resources for human resource management. And then the M-PALRA, don't you just love how acronym, how we pronounce acronyms like they're words? So that is the Michigan Public Employee Labor Relations Association. And so again, you're dealing, you're able to connect with other HR people, labor relations people in municipalities and in cities. And that runs some wonderful workshops to keep you up to date with all the changes that are happening in employment law, which we can't seem to not, to, to leave alone. Okay, and then there's two different things. So I, contracted services, so contracted services, 100, maybe $105,000 of that is our Plant Moran Benefit Consultants. Okay? And then about another 9,000 is for the ACA, for the Affordable Care Act compliance issues that most HR departments have outsourced to an expert so that we're on compliance with the federal laws associated with that. And then the rest of that contracted services has to do with labor attorney fees and a few other contracted services in terms of providing some testing resources. So under the General Civil Service Group, we create and administer the test. And then the last item here, under training, why you're seeing an increase in the training. So this training is now for the city of Dearborn Heights employees training. So this is not just for the HR department. This is for the employees as a whole. And as you may recall, we had negotiated in TPOAM for our clerical staff to follow a certification path. And so for them to be certified in Microsoft Windows And so, um, for them to be certified in Microsoft Windows, um, is about just under 6,300 dollars. For that process, to afford that opportunity to 48 employees, as a total of our clerical group, maybe, you know, that's the most it would cost because perhaps not every clerical employee wishes to pursue that. It's a voluntary thing under the contract, but once you do acquire it, then, um, you earn an additional 25 cents. We have other training opportunities that we want to create, but we wanted to start with the Microsoft Office Windows one. And so that's, uh, that's what that, uh, cost would be and why you would see any, why you see an increase, um, in that budget line item. And then I think that takes you through the whole HR budget, right?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director.
And we have two more, sorry, um, because I'm also over the civil service processes, but, but, but these, these are shorter budgets.
Act 78?
It's page 12 and 13. It's really just a civil service and Act 78 commission.
So you said you were an educator, right? What did you teach?
No, I said I retired from public education. Actually, I served my whole 20 years as a lead HR person.
Wow.
And I know all kinds of stuff about teacher certification, which I did not when I started, so just to show that I can learn. Okay? Which, which, civil service is the first one? Okay. Okay, so for civil service, you know, our commission fees, um, as you know, we pay a certain amount for each meeting, we also pay for their attendance at, um, interviews. And then, um, French benefits is, is the taxes. And then for professional contract services, wanted to let you know that that includes, uh, e-skills and that's the main tool that we use to design the tests that we have to administer according to the civil service process. And then, um, also included in that is, uh, applicant, an online application, uh, program that we purchased called Jazz HR. Uh, we were paying 360 dollars a month for that so that we could move our application from paper to online, um, as we move forward with the new payroll system, Paycom. They have a component of online application, so we will not need Jazz HR going forward. So that's a, a cost that will go away. And then on occasion, we pay the, most of the time that we're posting on Indeed, we post for free, but on occasion for particular positions that are hard to fill, we'll pay the additional fee. And really what it does is it moves our posting up to the top of the list for a period of time is, is really what we're paying for. And then, um, that also includes, uh, the company that we use to do our background checks and our physicals and drug screens. So once we make an offer of employment for a civil service position, we then have to do the background check and we have to do the physical, which includes a drug screen. And so those costs get charged to, um, the civil service.
Okay.
Contracted services. And then for Act 78, again, same thing for the commissioners, um, they have a fee for each meeting and they have a fee for attending interviews. And then, um, uh, the French benefits are, are the, the taxes. And for the professional contracted services, um, again, uh, that really goes for, um, things affiliated with some of the background checks and some of the, those components. For our public safety positions, which Act 78 oversees, so this is your fire and your police, um, they're required to take a written test, but the city does not pay for that test. And that's through an organization called MCOW. And so once they take that test, uh, the score is good for a year, you have to score 70% or better, those are our rules, and they can designate what cities are able to access that, that score. So, um, uh, we don't have to incur that cost, that's a, an employee cost to apply. Okay? And those are the commissioners.
So for the fees for the commissioners on, uh, Act 78 commission doubled, is that because we're going to hire more people, that's why they have to meet more often on, and again, pay more?
Yeah, so, so part of it is that we have to, general civil service, we have to have one commissioner, um, uh, attending the interview so that they're overseeing that this is the same process being applied to every applicant. Under Act 78, you have to have two commissioners. And then what used to happen, I, 10 years before I got here, is that you would have 12 people lined up to interview, so you'd have them here for a day. So 200 dollars for a day to interview, right, 12 people with a break for lunch, like, that's a full day for anybody to sit through all of that. Today, because we're trying to be more agile and because there's so much competition for those public safety positions, if we get somebody that has the criteria, we try to schedule them as quickly as we can. So we're doing a lot more, one here, one there, you know, it's a lot harder for us to do a full day. Sometimes the most I can get is three. So i- it's gone up a little bit because we're interviewing more frequently and not able to corral a group of 10 in on, on any given day.
So what happened with the civil service commission, like this year we budgeted 10,000, we're using 10,000, but went down to 2550 for next year.
On which line item?
71, 712, and the civil service commission, just, uh, page 12.
Went from 10,000 to 2550.
Oh, I don't know. I think that's a mistake.
So it was budgeted at 2,500 last year, um, we can up that to 10 since it looks like the last two years it's been historically. Yeah.
I mean, we spent 8528, but projected to be spent 10,000 by the end of this fiscal year. Yeah. I know in the past, and then even in 22, 23, we spent 9648. So that should be at 10,000.
We'll change that.
My note?
So the last one is just TIFA on page 55 and 56. You don't, I was just going to say, you don't have to do TIFA.
It shouldn't even be a part of the budget, we just followed it from last year, I spoke with.
Okay, so that's all taken care of.
Not so.
Perfect.
Councilmembers, mayor, HR, thank you. Thank you, guys. This evening. Michelle, thank you.